So these seven strong and they call the public hearing to order. And. They all want to speak. It's seven.
Are there questions here?
Okay.
While you're changing the dates on the town budget meeting, that would now allow us to have a single date of both the town and the Ram referendum on one day instead of two separate calls.
Yes.
I didn't see that mentioned in your figure there to do it. Thank you.
I have a number of comments here from the debate. From chapter three, Town Meeting section three oh one. I do not like the proposed changes to the town meeting. Giving the board selectmen legislative authority for almost all matters is taking away the voice of the people of Anover. But provisions for the electors to repeal any ordinance enacted by the board of selectmen, yet making the referendum wait until the next November election, I feel is unnecessary. As a referendum need not be prohibitively expensive, especially if you just do handwritten votes instead of that machine that we use for the presidential elections. Sections three oh three and eight oh three, the town meeting, the annual town budget meeting. I would only want to see the date lead up to the last week of April instead of three weeks or two, three weeks or other. All steps involved in preparing the town budget only need to be moved by one, not completely reworked. It looks like it's completely working the whole budget issue. The system, which I don't think is necessary. Section three oh four, special town meetings. Three oh four D, this section about the creation, consolidation, modification, abolition of boards, commissions, et cetera. I don't feel should be eliminated. I think that should still be there, that special town meetings do this. Section three oh four G, grants. When discussing grants, I realized that the amount was very, very low. And the local Board of Education should be included in this. It said that the local Board of Education might be involved with this because by state statute, the Board of Education is independent of the town when it comes to their grants. In chapter four, the Board of Selectmen, section four oh one. I asked, what happened to the question of increasing the number of selectmen from five to seven? It was deferred to a later meeting at the June fourth meeting. It was mentioned and they said, well, we'll defer this and hold it till later. It was never mentioned again. I think that increasing the number of selectmen would be a good idea. Section four oh two, the general powers and duties of the Board of Selectmen. I think that there's too much power given to just the Board of Selectmen. I mean, I know I'm on the Board of Selectmen, but I still feel like we should have a town meeting, the people of the town voting and not taking that away from the people. Chapter seven, the administrative officers, section seven oh one general. I believe that the town clerk position should remain an elected position. It has worked in the past and there's no reason why it can't continue to work that way. And chapter 10, the transition and miscellaneous provisions, section one oh oh eight. I do agree with giving any future charter revision commission a minimum of six months so that you draft it. I think you've been rushed. It just looks like you've been cramming the meetings in, trying to get it done the last minute. That's provision of the part six. So I have it all typed out. If I can give it to somebody. Right, okay. So not that it's supposed to respond.
Yeah, because I. This is a matter of not, not all the time.
Right.
Correct. Is, 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 is.
Okay.
Well. It's, it may, it may be reasonable, but I always caution people not to respond.
Okay.
For a bulk hearing. That's the way it's done everywhere I've been involved.
Okay.
I mean, you can't, I mean, it's nothing.
We're all friends here.
Okay. There's, there's just a couple. And as far as moving the vote and the dates up, we would have to move the annual town budget meeting to that second week in April because this gives us a two week period to be on with Ram, which is that vote is the Tuesday following the first Monday of May. That statutory, we cannot change that. So that's why these dates are specific. Where Board of Finance has to have their public hearing that first week of April. Our annual town budget meeting is the second week of April. And it automatically goes to referendum on the Tuesday following the first Monday in May. So that's why that date is pushed up. And everything is just pushed up really by about 30 days.
The goal, the goal was to have one referendum, not two referendums. That's all that is.
But my comment is this, because the Ram budget has done that vote for a week before ours. So why do we have to change by more than a week?
It's well.
Doesn't make sense. It's getting time for the people to get the notice out in the mail and the. Right, so we still have to get that notice this out. This gives everybody two weeks to apply for an absentee ballot if they're not going to be there on that day, so.
Just, just so, and I only want to respond to one other cheating problem, is that we did change to not wait to just remember. We said that if there was a ordinance that the Board of Selectmen wanted to pass and it got petitioned, it would go to either the May referendum or the November. So not just November.
But what, you mean like the budget referendum? So whatever, we need the next scheduled event that we have rather than schedule the special referendum for that.
I mean, our goal was to not make more councilmen have more days where we don't have more participation. So more participation, not less participation. Because they are in town meetings, they are in town meetings, honestly. We average 50 people at those town meetings. And, and the goal, if we could send it to referendum, to get more participation, to allow more people to be able to vote on these issues. So that, that's it.
I don't see that. It seems to me like it does not. It's taking away the voice of the people because they can't come out and give you to a town meeting. This, we've had a town meeting in Anover for how many years? Hundred years probably or more. We're still a small town, I can't see changing it. That's my voice. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to do two things, but I think, one, the Shannon Law can't be here today because of conflict. Ask if I would read her letter. And I've got copies for, for all of you and I can, I can forward it to her if you want it. She asked if it'd be read into the record, which I assume immediately ends up on the minutes somehow or. I built one on my own, so maybe a few minutes if that's okay. Yeah, okay. So Shannon's letter. I'm not even trying to do a Shannon voice. And I'm not going to read word for word. A lot of it overlaps with what Anne just said. Mine does too. We're all independents, right? You know, at least mine could listen to it and the other two. She says, thanking for all the work you do and have done per the charter. Concerned of the following proposed amendments to the charter. I do not agree that the position of town clerk should be appointed by the Board of Selectmen instead of elected by the citizens of Anover. An appointed town clerk creates a possibility that if three members of the Board of Selectmen have some disagreement with the town clerk, those three selectmen can choose not to reappoint that town clerk. The vote by any of those citizens does not allow such a egregious result. Even more troubling about the proposed amendment to the charter in this regard is that the appointment of a critical position of the town clerk would be left to a newly elected Board of Selectmen, which is likely to be one or more selectmen with little or no knowledge from which to make the best informed decision about the town clerk. Town clerk's position should remain the way. Secondly, a typo, I'll just give you the paper with that stuff on it. Third, by far our biggest one is about the, I don't believe there's any need for legislative authority in the town to change the town meeting to join the authority of the Board of Selectmen. I believe that such a change is not in the best interest. First, in my more than 20 years of living in Anover, I do not recall a single matter that was of such emergency nature that it was not adequately addressed by a town meeting. And section four oh six of the charter already provides for emergency ordinances. Many references during the commission's meeting have been made to the, to the need, made to the need to address people's violation of the no dog policy on the town, more of the field and roadside drive and the waste of dogs leaving on the field. If a minor ordinance does not already exist in the seventy nine pages of ordinances on the town website to address this specific issue, it can quickly be addressed by the Board of Selectmen's authority to enact minor ordinances. Given that no dog signs are located around the field, it may simply be a matter of enforcement instead of a need for more legislation. Second, I do not believe that it was in the best for the town that the Board of Selectmen would become the both a legislative body and the board responsible for the town's budget because there's needs to be separation of powers between the purse strings and the policy creation. Third, while I appreciate for some inquiries to read that if, that given legislative authority by amending the charter, the Board of Selectmen would not propagate unreasonable, unreasonable legislation. I do not believe that the onus for determining the unreasonableness should shift to 50 Anover citizens to be required to put in petition to repeal such a legislative act. Why not simply keep the town meeting as a legislative body instead of requiring 50 citizens to petition to repeal whatever the Board of Selectmen not citizens don't? I mean, I'm going to skip the rest of that. She goes on, she says that in her town, I know she never felt like too many town meetings was a problem. And she suggests if, if really think that it should have more legislative authority, a compromise might be that, you know, in the spring and the fall elections, the Board of Selectmen propose ordinances to go to, go to the town meeting. There's another typo mentioned in there. She says, she, I believe that the proposed changes to section eight oh three need to be further amended to provide for the town's budget. It's possibly amended by a town meeting for such, only to provide to, proceed to referendum, sorry. Should have read this over before I came. It would have been approved by majority of voters. As currently proposed, it doesn't seem to be a description unless required. And she asked what the mechanism is for addressing the town budget if the religion, eight Board of Education budget doesn't pass. If I'd seen this with enough time, I think I would have told you the answer to that post. On the Ram Board of Education. If the proposed changes to three oh, if the proposed changes to three or four F end their vote changes, I do not believe that the special town meeting has oversight to require votes to allow this local Anover Board of Education to participate in any federal, state, or private grant program. I'm going to address the same thing in my book, so I'm going to skip the rest of that. Finally, I believe it is critical to allow Anover's voters on the ballot this November to vote on each separate proposed amendment to the charter. The Board of Selectmen's clause is to be enacted. So that's Shannon's letter. If you want to respond to that, that's fine, but she's not prepared to actually speak for herself. Mine covers much the same point, so.
Can I have a copy of that?
Yeah, I'm going to bring it right now. I'll give you a copy of mine as well. Actually, anybody here wants to?
Actually, ask the force, we can let them.
Yeah, well. You've got a lot of papers. It's up for you. That's all I'm talking about. So that's Shannon's. I. I do much the same thing in my letters. I guess about the same number of words, almost half a page or longer. So I start to say thank you for all the work you're doing here. You have crammed in a lot in a short time, I'm impressed. I'm also concerned by that. This is very odd. That we should have this in front of voters before our presidential election, sounds a little more like an excuse. If we really wanted that, why didn't we start it earlier? Doesn't, doesn't seem like a, a strong reason for, for speeding this up so much. My big concern is that, as far as I can tell, none of these changes were available to see, to look at before Monday. I looked on the website, it was Friday to Saturday, and I think there was nothing there. Monday, I finally saw this document with the proposed changes, managed to read through it.
I just want to know if that could be something.
The, the, the document with the changes to the, okay, this is.
Okay.
This is Shannon's.
I'll finish.
I'll do mine afterwards. Let's see, you wanted to read along.
I have a hard take there too.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm not going to read it.
Shannon's?
This is mine, he got Shannon's there.
Oh, okay, yeah. Did I see what the, what document you're referring to?
I'm talking about the.
The one that says, direct report?
Not, not the short one, just the changes, but the, the full document of the changes, the full charter of the changes. The other one was on attachment to the most recent. It was just the deltas, but not the, the full, full charter. This, this is much easier to read and understand the full one. So yeah, I was, I was concerned by that. You know, the public's chance to react is right now. And that's pretty short from when this thirty or forty, fifty day shot, whatever it is, document was made available on Monday. All right, so I've got a bunch of notes there. First one is a bunch more technical things. Either typos or like this thing that's in the section on definitions is in the definition. It belongs somewhere else, I've anywhere. The election dates are on the yes and yes, no big deal. I could luckily go along if, I don't have a vice chair, and a mayor was promoting the idea of a elected, I don't want to talk about it, but I don't like the idea in general. The twenty three D, now I've got my notes, but not the document from you, but. Oh, yeah, why, why, why newly elected roles start so soon? It's, it seems, it seems fast to me. Seems to me that there should be little transition period. Why not January first or something like that? It's, some of these are minor concerns. And the, I'll talk about the law, the law, change of legislative authority. There's something about effective dates, forty five days out. How does that affect an ordinance that says as of October first? You know, I just don't know how it's, it's a question, not really a concern, but you know. I don't know that we have it like that, but I tend to see a lot of provisions passed in general and say, that's a substitution of a date. Now we say it's going to take place, take effect forty five days from. Whatever, it's just a weird connection. And if, if we need that forty five days, if we need it done that soon, then why, when they failed, we sent it out for six months? Seems to me that, that at that point, if they're important enough to do it forty five days, then we should probably have special referendum. But not important enough that it can be scheduled that far. Jump, you know, if they're, you know, we want to change this, but it's not urgent. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. The three oh one G, I'm going to, I'll talk about all of them. And just technical things, why do you have a specific date? October fifteenth in, you know, one section, the very next section, a hundred and fifty days before the end of the fiscal year. Can't they both be the same style? You know, both say October fifteenth and whatever, a hundred and fifty days before that date is, rather than combining the two with the document. Again, that's, that's where, there's a typo between eight oh three C and eight oh three, eight oh two, eight oh two, eight oh two C and eight oh two D. Just the word year shifted pretty clearly, shifted from one place to another. Something was for eighty five days, which strongly isn't usual number, but it may be the same kind of thing Carol was talking about there, about it just has to be so far behind. But after this of eighty five, ninety, if it's not, ninety days seems a much more logical number. You know, just eighty five is weird. We're all used to things measured in ninety days, thirty, sixty, ninety days, hundred and twenty, whatever. Eight oh five B, I'm just going to leave it for you to read, the text is quite confusing. There's, I'm wondering if there's any legal requirement that we have figures and dollar figures down to the penny in here? Two hundred thousand point zeros, we are, if that's required. If not, easily without it.
No, it's not.
Okay. And in that scene, eight oh five B, we use the budget as approved by the Board of Finance. Shouldn't that be approved through referendum? And that is, that is the final authority on the budget. So if it gets approved by the Board of Finance and rejected by the voters, does, how does that react? How's that experience and how's that interact as a way? And yes, like Anne said, the minimum of six months of the charter would be, would be a very good idea. I can imagine why it's put in there. So the commentary is, it is to three things here. One is the legislative authority, I don't see any need. We, we don't have emergencies in town that require that. If we do, we have authority to act. And if not, it's, you know, what's it, seven days or fourteen days for an announcement of open meeting. But it's not, it's five days, it's only five days. It's really not that hard, a real emergency you're going to deal with no matter what. If it's not, it could be some real problems you can have, but it's only for convenience of the Board of Selectmen or the town manager, then you know what? Democracy is necessary. Democracy can be slow. But democracy is also a very good thing to have. And our little New England town democracies are one of the few remaining straight democracies there are. I think it's good to keep them. Losing it just because things are a little slow without some strategy. And I'm especially bothered by the, the process for, just in here, overturning an ordinance. I think that the idea that, well, if not enough people to come out to vote, then, oh, they must have meant they wanted it. It's basically how it reads. I, no, if people don't turn out to vote, then, then we probably shouldn't have passed any ordinance. I have the same concern both Sharon, Shannon, and Anne expressed about the town clerk position. I'm not going to read it, but it's, it's the same thing. I think that it's worked well for us in the twenty five years I've been in town. Of course, we've had the same town clerk for those twenty five years.
We had other ones prior to that.
Yeah, of course we have, but.
And you're also elected.
Yeah, and I, I think, I've got to say, Carol has done a fantastic job in that role. So if she is interested in that and she's for it, I'm, I'm fine with it. But I'd rather not see this in general, I think. And the same concern about the Board of Education grants. I've got the book on Connecticut education law. And I haven't been able to read everything related to that in the two days since this came out. But I'm pretty sure that this is actually legal, that we cannot do that. Board of Education is responsible for that and there is no external oversight. Board of Finance, of course, can say, well, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to read that budget. The town can obviously reject the budget, but we can't micromanage much of any of it. That includes the grant process. I may be wrong, I finished all that material, but it's, the book is not thick and it's not all in one place. So that's it. I'm, there was supposed to be a final thanking line here, but I broke this in a hurry. But thank you very much for the work that guys have been doing. I do disagree with some of the major concerns though. And, oh, I. And what they didn't mention and I didn't read is, I am concerned about how these will be presented, how many different yes, no votes that we're going to have. But if they're not separate enough, I don't have to fire your heart, I think, this, this chart because I think some of these points are really bad. Some of them are pretty necessary, there's a change of the dates and I'll add. I think, so I'm hoping that this is broken down into the last small pieces. If it's not changed before, it's hard to be. So that's it. Sorry for being very long-winded. You'll maybe email those? Maybe easier if I email you copies of those.
This is good. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's see.
I just wanted to say that I would think that something of this importance, we would get a mailer. And I don't know if I didn't get one that was sent out, but just happened to notice in the River East, which I don't always look at it, but that there was a meeting, was it fifteen, Monday? And then sent it to a friend who told me that there was public speak today. So it's kind of like, I just happen to know about this. And I feel like charter revisions should be, you know, there should be a notice sent out in the mail that there's going to be changes and this is your opportunity to speak. The other thing is, I hadn't really put a lot of thought into this, but I did see part of the meeting talking about the, you know, town clerk, you know, going from an elected, an elected official to appointed. And, you know, a good point was made that an appointed official would be somebody you could draw from a larger crowd, you know, like say someone from Simsbury or whatever, some other town never even heard of in Anover. They wouldn't come, you know, to try to be elected because who would elect somebody you'd never heard of before? You could probably find some very qualified people. And Carol, they've done a wonderful job and, and yes, it's worked for twenty five years, but just because it's worked for twenty five years doesn't mean it's going to continue. You know, things change, world changes, sometimes we have to change. And if other towns are doing it other ways, it might be good to, you know, see how they're doing it. That's just my thought.
If I may, can I have a quick follow up to something I, it's in my letter, but it is an important point. It was one of the things about this, me to this process is, I spoke to another volunteer for this who never got notified, never, ever learned that she wasn't chosen. Nobody notified her when I mentioned something about it till the last week. She said, oh yeah, when's that started? It's something I'm wanting. And, and that bothers me.
Well, to clarify a few things in terms of the process, Scott, and in all those, the, the process, this is just a, one part of the process. After this, after this process is completed and the, the commission comes up with a final report, it goes to the Board of Select. Then will be public hearing there. Board of Selectmen will decide what to send to the voters in November, if they do it in November. I can tell you this though, if it, if it sends to the voters any time other than the general election, it will fail. It will fail. There's no way, I've never seen a charter pass that wasn't with other things on the ballot because you won't get the turnout for it. And so anybody who does this kind of thing, and town does this thing, usually does it in November if their election's in November, whether it be, you know, the local election or the, or the state election or the presidential. Because the, you have to get a certain number of people to turn out, a certain number of people to vote. Yes, and it's not, it's largely not doable as a part of the, you know, just like to talk about the town meeting, Scott. Yes, and it's not, uh, it's largely not doable as a person, you know, just like you talked about the town meetings, Scott. Town meetings are attended by a very small percentage of the population. I'm all for democracy too. Perhaps as much as you, maybe even more, but, uh, I like it here in situations like this of representative democracy. The question is, is whether it's indoor or big enough for representative democracy, or is, uh, town meeting type, movement type town meeting, uh, in this day and age when more people are stay at home, watch television. I know the younger crowd knows that, because I have great children, and they don't know any, or I can't even get them to go out and throw a ball around, because they're good athletes. But, um, getting people out for town meetings, I mean, you might get the same crowd all the time. So that, so what that amounts to is that you elect your Board of Selectmen, five members. Uh, they, they campaign, you know who they are, you get a chance to vote for them. And the people who come to town meetings, nobody votes for them, and they're a small group, relatively small group. You now have a, a minimum that we have to have, I think you have a quorum of twenty-five. So if you get twenty-five people together at a town meeting, that group that's self-selected gets a chance to pass the ordinance. So that to me is not democracy. Uh, not quite. Not, not in a town, but how many people, uh, how many fours are there? Two thousand?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred votes. Twenty-five people is, you know, that to me is not democracy. So that's, that's just my own personal opinion. I'm, I'm more interested in, in, in talking about the process and how it works, and it's not, this is just a, a, an opening stage. It is not the final stage. And the Board of Selectmen really has more control over what goes. What goes and what doesn't go to the voters. And, and quick, to answer your question about, does it go in one, one big package? No, it's broken down into issues. And, and something like this with a lot of, uh, you know, relatively a lot of issues into it, you might get, um, because I've been working on that with the, with the Board of Selectmen. You might get five or six questions. And that's, you know, sometimes you have one as a catch-all with mind stuff in it. But you, you know, you don't, it's not, it's not voted on as a, a single package. And that's another way that the voters in November, I assume, don't get a big turnout. No. Well, I hope so too. I hope everybody votes. I always do. And, and because I'm not only been a lawyer for fifty years, I've been involved in politics for forty, more than forty years. And, uh, I like, uh, I like elections, I like elected, people being elected. And in most situations, uh, I was a probate judge and I was elected, and a lot of people don't think judges should be elected, but I kind of think they should. And, uh, the town clerk, uh, that's a, that could go either way in my, in my opinion. But, you know, somebody said, as you said, you have, you, you know, if you have somebody on the carrot leaf who is terrific and lives in town, wonderful. But if you can't find somebody who, uh, who wants to do the job and who has that capability in town, an awful lot of towns, including my own town, I live in, have gone to, uh, appointed, uh, uh, town clerk. In fact, my story is that I was the Democratic Board of Chair when that happened. And the person who was the town clerk was a Democrat, was very popular. And I tried to talk her out of it. I said, no, no, I want you to stay in the ballot. You're a vote getter, and you bring, you bring a lot of people to a Democratic line. And she said, no, I really don't want to go through the electoral process again. I said, look, whatever you want, I'll support. I was also the chairman of the Charter of this Commission. Carol, I think, whatever you want, I would support if I ran this commission. But anyway, I mean, that's, to me, that's not a, that's not a key issue. There are advantages and disadvantages to that. The advantage being, you know, you get a larger, full potential applicants. And, and, and as Carol knows, and as anybody who's ever worked at the town clerk knows, you gotta have a good town clerk. If you don't, you're in big trouble. You're in trouble plenty. So, uh, you know, that, there's that issue. But you brought up something, you talked about legal, it was in here. And I, I, I'm very, very keen on the, uh, the, uh, the dichotomy between town government and the Board of Education. Okay, I've dealt with that, a lot of towns, including this one. And, uh, there's always arguments about that, because, because the state constitution gives the responsibility to educate children up to the town. Uh, but, 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 uh, but the, the, the school property is owned by the, I mean, to the Board of, Board of, the, the school property is owned by the town. So we get, we had this problem on there. You remember, huh? Okay. That was an interesting issue. And you remember Tom Looney, who came to one of the meetings? He's an old friend of mine, we worked together on, I have, I read his book too. And, and, uh, I, I, uh, he came to one of the meetings, I think he clarified things quite well. But anyway, you said that it's something in this, that is, uh, you think it might be illegal, and if there is.
In my mind, we never change terminology about Board of Education in this, in the current.
No, we did change it.
Well, in my copy, it seems that it was added. And the local Board of Education, G. Now let's make that through. Oh, and, oh, excluding regional Board of Education.
Right, so it's, it's weird because.
Okay, so that's, that may be an issue there. Carol, do you have that in yours? That's, that's two or four G?
I do have that in mind, because originally it said in excess of twenty-five hundred, excluding the local and regional Board of Education.
Yes, actually that language is still in there as well.
Right, and then the other language as well. It's, it's, it's not only, it might be legal, but it's very confusing between the two clauses.
Well, that, that is, it is certainly confusing.
We can remove that then, because I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, you know, I don't think anybody wants to, uh, take away any kind of authority from the Board of Education, as rightfully as, uh, the Board of Education. As I've said many, many times, there's no, no support for public education anywhere in here. So I don't, I don't have any problem.
Shannon might already, Shannon.
Oh, I think I, I remember that. I have, I have.
But Shannon's at the Board of Assembly today, because there's nothing more to stop us, you couldn't make this.
Okay.
But yeah, if, if, if we start that, um, and the local Board of Education, that, that, I would never object.
Well, it's, 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 it's in there as an exclusion of the pub, and then it says.
Right, and that was, it's at the back end, so, yeah.
I don't know how it got in there, maybe it was me, maybe it was somebody else, but I, I don't, does anybody have a problem striking that?
Well, we'll do it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you can, okay, so, so just consider that. Okay? Does anybody here, and I can see Jeff getting tired of listening to me, as he often does, but I can actually chat talk.
It's your birthday and I cannot.
My birthday, again, was. You can take me out of the room if you want. But, um, anyway, that's something to consider for you all. Okay, the other thing I want to say at the outset, and I'll shut up, is that, yes, this group took on a lot of issues in a very short time. That was their choice. I did not think that was the intention. Uh, I, I, it's a small group, it's like seven members. We're missing three members today. Um, everybody, from my standpoint, worked very hard on this, and compromised and came up with a, I think, a pretty good, pretty good plan that, you know, if I were a local resident, I'd want to go to the voters in November, mostly, all of it, except for that mistake that you pointed out. Because it can always be rejected piecemeal, you know, you know, there's certainly several, several questions. I don't know, you may want to revisit the town clerk issue, uh, now, now that it's been raised by Scott and Shannon and, 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 I don't know. I guess the Antu, okay, and then you had, you had a control. Okay, I'm just trying to be helpful. Jeff, I know you don't want to hear anymore from me, because I do have a reputation as being, uh, well, you remember Bill Curry? I, I am the local, I am the local Bill Curry in Winnebago, and they try to shut me up all the time. And nobody shuts me up, uh, Jeff, Jeff McQuarrie, you're not the chairman.
I'm just telling you, I'm not the chairman.
You're not the chairman, Jesus. So if Carol wants to shut me up, I'll shut her. Do you have any questions for me? I will. But I just want you to know that the process is, this is just the first stage of the process. The next stage is Board of Selectmen. This gets the report, and then, uh, they decide what to do. If they have any differences, they can send the differences back to this group, they can get together, try to iron out the differences. Then the Board of Selectmen is the one, is the bottom that decides, uh, how to state it on the ballot, whoever's breaking it up with the questions, which I will try to help. Carol will try to help, of course, as we all help each other. And, um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't go to the voters as a big package. All right, I'll, I will, uh, I will pass. Go to the speaker.
Um, just to follow up on that, what my comment about the town clerk was that, I don't know about you, Carol, but I don't think it's gonna work forever, so we might have to have another town clerk at some point, so, that's just my thought. Uh, and then, I remember your name, but you said something about the town.
Me?
Yes.
Dennis, I'm so boring.
Dennis, yes.
I love everybody.
I don't know everybody.
Neither do I.
Well, you said something about the town meeting that made me realize that most of the people that are at the town meeting have a vested interest in the outcome of the budget that we're talking about. So when you look around at the meeting, it's always people that are there have an actual interest in it. So, i- it's true what you're saying that, you know, we're actually allowing minority people have a large percent, a large say in what happens to our town, just based on those few people that show up. Because I know, as a, an individual who just tries to be, um, you know, on both sides, I don't try to, you know, be just on one side, I try to look at all sides and, and just try to be a person that's gonna think about the whole town in general. Anyway, I've tried to get a lot of people here. People don't come to the meetings. It doesn't matter what you say, you can turn, you know, rival or whatever, they just won't come unless there's an actual interest. I have. I said, well, if I have a case of beer in my car, would you come? Maybe, but no, I'm not gonna do that.
Well, there was a time when I was first here where the decisions were made by that group. There was no referendum, it was never referred to a referendum, and it was, uh, deemed at, over a period of time, that it was a much, much more democratic to open it to those that could not attend or would not be likely to attend, and they needed a bigger pool of voters to contribute votes to pass a budget every year. So then we went to having it passed a referendum, which is fair, because everybody gets a chance. Not that everybody takes it.
And most people assume that people that went to the town meeting know what they're talking about, so they'll just let them do them.
Yeah, but then they'll complain over tax level on some item or another in it, and they put their opinion in by voting, so. It's the fair way. Were you our, uh, town where that took place? Who was that before?
I've been to town for twenty.
Twenty-something years?
Uh, twenty-seven, no. About twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think it was before that.
It was around two thousand and one that I started.
You don't remember that particular vote?
No, not that one.
That happened before I came into town.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, I'm going like that, because I was here.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, well, that's.
Just so we can move on to the meeting, is there any other public speaking?
Just a comment, you know, our best thoughts for a thought. Is recovered.
We're actually gonna have a quick meeting, I'll stay. I don't think so. Do we need a motion to adjourn public?
I think so, just adjourned, so.
Yeah, you should adjourn the public hearing if you're.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second. adjourned, seven forty-four. What's that?
I have a question.
All in favor? Is approving our minutes from last week and the week before. So, discussion, comments, motion.
I'll make a motion. You make a question? Make a motion, you make.
Motion's approved last week, we'll leave it, so that's eleven.
I'll say.
All in favor? Now, our next order of business is discussion and possible action on any of the charter revision issues. So, would you like to address three oh four G?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to amend three oh four G and strike the Inover Board of Education from the per.
Where is work beginning to start here?
Infor, a local board of education.
It's right here.
It's the local Board of Education out of it.
Right.
Hopefully.
Sure.
Seven seconds.
Quick, session, move slower.
Okay, and just, just, just for the board, the board needs to spray. That, that, I don't. So, that was made to.
It's not a good job.
Creation of the document, the town attorney. So, I'm all ready for it, should I?
And, so any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
So Carol, I would like to just talk about the town clerk, just as a side thing. The town clerk is, the town clerk's position in, in our community is very important. Carol has done a great job. No one will ever argue Carol has done a great job, but just like we had to move away from the first selectman being the true chief administrator of the town and hire a town administrator, it's made our town better, and it's made us more efficient. So as we move forward, and Carol, uh, I, I don't want to age you anymore than you can age, but as we age, as, as we age out, you know, we're extremely lucky, we're extremely lucky in our town that we have someone that runs like Carol, but as a, as the first selectman, you are never that capable of finding the right candidate time after time after time after time. And, and things do not improve every time you get a new person elected into that position. So, it's, it's not, everybody believes it's trying to take something away. It's not trying to take anything away, it's trying to plan for the future. It's trying to make sure that we have the opportunity to have the right person in a position. It's not three members of the Board of Selectmen are gonna pick a fight with the town clerk to throw the town clerk out. It's trying to get the right person. Carol, I totally get where Carol would want to come from, which is, you could keep running forever and win. There's not one doubt within this town, that the more, every election you want to run, you're, you're gonna win. The issue is, the issue is that when she decides not.
When she wants to retire.
What happens to the town? And, and this is what this is about. So everybody understands that. It's what happens to the town. So, I, I just wanted to clear that, because everybody's sitting there saying we're trying to do something negative to Carol. It's not, not about Carol, it's about what we're doing to the town moving forward, because we need a qualified person in that position. And it's just like what we did with the town administrator. But Carol, again, they come down to the same, if it's not right.
I'm, this was a given apart, I'm totally neutral, I'm.
Okay.
We're having here what was presented and voted on, so.
So you're good. You may not believe totally that because of Dennis's issue about election, being an elected position.
Well, I like, I like what's in the draft. I think it's okay. So, but, but I, you know, I'm pretty careful on that.
So, thank you, Tab. Anything else that was brought forward to us at the public hearing? Any member would like to revisit in our proposed draft? So, um, line was increasing Board of Selectmen from five to seven. That was Jody. That was Jody's research. Any discussions?
Uh, eight to seven.
What's the?
Five to seven selectmen?
Correct. It goes, I mean, me, me not that board. It goes back to the whole community, the whole town and, and having enough volunteers that are, that are qualified for all of the different. This started with me, saying that I would have a seven-member board, that I would consolidate the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen so they can have seven volunteers, not, not what we currently got, which is twelve volunteers. And, so this did start with me and my initial proposal to the board that I wanted them to consider to commission, which was a town council. Because I feel it would be in the best interest of the community to have orders, a group that sits there and has the vision for the community and also has control of the finances. That's, that was, we decided to go against that. So now we still have all of the same number, we have twelve potential people, we have to fill. And a lot of the members of the Board of Finance drop out and you will sit there and see each cycle, you'll have two or three members of the Board of Finance that get replaced, not elected, but replaced. And so, the Board of Selectmen does not have that necessary, that problem really. We haven't had anybody resign since I've been. Well, we got issues, but it was not because of personal issues, it was their own issue. I just don't think, I don't think the, I don't, I personally don't believe seven members of the Board of Selectmen, if you're gonna have seven members of the Board of Finance, because now you're trying to get a paper pool and we're having trouble getting where we're gonna pay.
I'm fine with what we did. Okay. Any other discussion adding?
Yeah.
So, we're just gonna leave the Board of Selectmen section as okay? All right, the other.
You know, it's not public speaking, I'm not a board. I urge you to look at the things that Shannon knows, his typos or minor wording changes that.
Yes.
That are. We'll leave all the typos, like two thousand years. Yeah, we'll go through all of them. Yeah, things like the, even the definition section is not a definition, that's what I'm saying.
We appreciate it.
Were there any technical things you moved on that we should move on? Or at least all, I mean, the public came, the people came, they had to ask this question.
So, the only thing, the town budget meeting in April, hopefully that explanation was good enough, we're having to bump the dates up just so that we have everything on schedule to vote with the RAN budget.
Have one election day goes on, ready for both RAN and.
For the initial budget, for, for both initial budgets. You may have to go to a second round, depending upon, yeah, for example. But that's, that's also covered in other parts of the charter.
But how do you know another day costs a lot more?
Well, you just have to get everybody to come. And if you just tell them, this is our first come to vote one time, so.
Yeah.
And then this was just section one zero zero eight. They felt that that, you know, not kind or retarded was a good thing.
Yes.
The only other thing is, powers and duties, so they're feeling, there was comment that powers and duties, too much power was being given to the Board of Selectmen through the legislative authority attributed from our town meetings to the Board of Selectmen during the ordinance process.
Again, from my standpoint, I'm just gonna just express, it's, the Board of Selectmen can pass an ordinance. And we're not asking, we did not, when we put our numbers together, we said fifty people. It's the same number of people that go to a town meeting. And if they want to petition, which is only a signature and an address, right, on a form, they can petition to say that the ordinance is not what they wanna see happen. And then it pushes it immediately to a townwide referendum, so everybody gets to say an issue. Not just the fifty people at the town meeting saying yes or no. It's fifty people, handwrite, they don't have to go to a meeting, they don't have to go anywhere. Sign the petition, say they don't like this ordinance, goes to referendum. Twenty-five hundred people can hand over, never all vote, but twelve hundred people, twelve hundred people, twelve hundred people, not twenty-five, twelve hundred people are gonna get the ability to say yes or no. And I don't, I don't see, the town meeting is a, is a good vehicle. It allows people to speak their mind, but it is the same fifty people. And all the time. And it just spreads out who has a say. That's all we were trying to do, that's all we were thinking about.
And I think if I heard correctly, it was also concerned about deferring it to the next referendum or election, rather than after the petition is prevented, clearly we will maybe just bump it up so that we have a referendum to a closer date of that petition.
That just goes to special, specials. I, I mean, when we put special in front of everything in, in our town, it gets me because then everybody's got to sit there and change their schedule to do different things. But everybody knows there's a May election. But, and, and this is the other thing, in the beginning, we, I was just November, right? And the group sat there and said, don't just do November, May. So we did November and May. So it's six months apart, if the Board of Selectmen wants to pass an ordinance and let's sit there and say they wanna try to do something in December and a petition comes out and it's approved, it gets enough signatures, that ordinance does not go into effect until after the May election, if it's approved. And if it's not approved, it doesn't go into effect at all. So, it was timing, and Scott asked a question, I know, about forty-five days and why we did that. That was done so that the group would have the time to petition within the forty-five days. So it cannot go into effect, so the Board of Selectmen passes it at a meeting. It has, it actually has forty-five days after a mailer is sent out to the community saying that we're going to do the ordinance. The Board of Selectmen has approved the ordinance. The forty-five days starts when Carol's office receives that mailer and stamps it. And then the community has twenty days within that, that cycle to petition. So we're giving, we, what we did in this group was give as much leeway on all of this as we possibly could, so it was forty-five days ago into effect, twenty days within that forty-five days to petition. The clock starts when Carol's office receives the letter, the mailer has to go up and stand. And if no petitions happen, it goes into effect forty-five days, which also gives two Board of Selectmen. So if somebody really wants to complain about it and has a very good opinion and reasoning for it, and the Board of Selectmen listens to them, they could sit there and not vote to, not enact that petition and then it wouldn't go into effect. Even if one person came with legitimate argument and the Board of Selectmen listened to it, a three-two vote would kill that ordinance, because it has to need to go into effect. So, there were a lot of things we were attempting to do to make this work.
I just.
Go ahead. Go ahead, hold on a minute.
You're, so you're saying it could be a refer, a bunch of referendums in May or the election in November? I don't see the May in your picture.
It says it in.
I see the November under.
It says, it doesn't say May, it says any other, because the November election is a state election. Legally Dennis did it in that one, and turn here, let me find it. Or with the next page, I mean, four, so if you look at three oh one four.
Yeah.
It says, if petition contains significant balancing measures to go through this, in cooperation with the Office of the Secretary of State's date of law scheduled, a special respiration conducted simultaneously with the election regularly scheduled on first Tuesday after the first Monday of November. Or with the next regularly scheduled referendum immediately following validation of such petition, which in essence means May, because it's not a state election. May is not a state election, it's a town referendum.
So, did you say town budget?
We could potentially change that one, just to say, okay, but that's how.
Was it hard to deduce that from this, I didn't see, thank you.
Hey, you could also have more referendums if the budget fails, as we know, right? So you can circle them, hopefully at home. Yeah, most of us want the budget passed unless they're outrageous. Anyway, I just wanna respond to something Scott said before about the forty-five days. Now Scott, the, the time between the passing of an ordinance right now and the, and its official, you know, going, going place is twenty days. So we, we've increased that to allow for the petition. Okay? Right? Carol was there. You all were there. Okay, just wanted to make sure that, Scott, you wanna make a nap, eat? It's nothing to stop.
Don't need so much.
Not, not too much, it's all.
I, I don't have any, I mean, I know that there's differences in opinions, but that's why we voted. So that's why we go to the referendum. I mean, it, I've said it before, post to the last charter revision. I didn't believe in all of the issues on the last charter revision, but I am allowed to, we are allowed to push the referendum, we got voted on, and we got voted on in an appropriate manner. I was on the losing side of that one, that's fine. We may be on the losing side of some of these issues and some people may think it's not appropriate, but that to me is democracy in that you push it forward, it's approved, and you let people vote a referendum. And if it wins, it wins, and if it loses, it loses. And so, we're living with a bifurcated budget, what it makes happen is people have to show up to, to do their part and participate. And I believe that people, the group in town that believes in education has done a better job of getting people to meetings and we don't have any problems. We haven't had a bifurcated budget ever.
Just wanted to point out one thing, that, that last year's referendum on the charter revisions, one item failed, right? So we had four or five items passed in one day. So it does, you just, I think that's democracy, I think it works out that way. Usually, I know when we have our referendums in the window, there's always one item that fails and something's happened, you know, because the voters get their chance and they.
Could be two.
Could be two. Could be two, could be three.
Yes, could be no, so could be a whole.
But, you know, if you've done a good, really good job of the.
Dennis don't need once.
What's that?
If, if, if the community's done a good job of bringing it together to sense what the voters want, then it's likely the only one that doesn't pass.
Yeah, well, there'd be, there's usually one or two that are captured or so. And they go, they go either way, but the voters get a chance. And then it's not just this group, it's not just the Board of Selectmen, it's everybody. This is the first stage, that's all.
So, I think that we've covered everything that was brought out of public speak. Is there anything that I missed?
You?
No.
So.
Okay, all right. So.
I, I just wanted to say that what you need to do ultimately, but before you start, is you need to vote to approve the, the draft as amended. Cause there has been amendment. Yeah. And it's, and it's added on to the.
The draft is finished.
To the Board of Selectmen, not in the, you know, in advance of the deadline. And, uh.
So, I mean.
Actually, the person who does that is the town clerk, right?
I'll make, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we can, the, the draft to be amended with what we voted on today to the Board of Selectmen in accordance with our deadline of the twenty-seventh.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
So, next order of business is Paul with the speak.
And because I didn't think it should be a discussion, I agreed into a quick response to what you just said about, you know, about getting people out to vote. If we want people, you know, participate in the referendum and talk about the petition process, it'd be a lot better just to put these to referendum. Forget town meeting, just say, okay, the, you know, Board of Selectmen thinks these, these are good things and, you know, either our next six months get the referendum or it's all there's more urgent time, put it to referendum. That's, that's gonna be all the station than, than this process. But, the other thing I wanted to note is that you just voted to push this on even though I think there's some serious concerns of technographical and more slightly structural things that you really should address.
Okay, the technical thing.
Technicals we can deal with, but other things like, you know, this thing, like, this shouldn't be in one oh five H. It shouldn't be one oh five because of the definition, things like that. I don't know if you can change those now. So, the Board of Selectmen obviously can.
There, there's two different, so, there's two different documents. One is the draft that we have passed on, and one is the charter that we were using, utilizing to, to, to help ourselves, organize ourselves through this process. And that I believe is what you're referring to.
That, that's what I'm looking at, because that's, in, in the end, that's, that's what we're gonna have is the term, the changes in there. But, I just, I just wanted you guys to see if you can, look at these things and fix some of them, Board of Selectmen can. And, you know, Shannon had two or three items to have, and I asked her if she didn't have. But, they're technical things, you know, wording is wrong, and it's, it's wrong and totally wrong. Or, you know, this doesn't belong here, kind of thing, at one point, I didn't mention it when I spoke before, but where you say, oh, and this is now the, the responsibilities of that section, which is, you know, the Board of Selectmen now has this authority, which is in the current charter listed under the, you know, the town meetings authority. So your charter says now, oh, this section that you're gonna have, that you're in the charter, is invalid because it's not here. It's really, uh, uh, structural. And you can read in those statutes.
Yeah, all right, I will, I will.
Yeah, I, I see a new section.
That's one reason why I'm here, is to help with that kind of thing. If there's, if there's anything like that, that is, I would say relatively cosmetic.
Right, right, and, and just about, about half my notes are relatively cosmetic.
Okay, we will carefully, together, carefully consider those relatively cosmetic suggestions by Scott and by Shannon and, and maybe Justin, if he'd be.
Any more public speak?
Yeah.
Patricia?
What?
We only have one out of left in there.
Let me adjourn it.
Yeah.
Guess what?
Got it.
I will motion to adjourn this wonderful meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Oh, we have to go. You seconded or?
I will second it.
All right.
I guess I have to say thank you whenever I ask.
Aye, aye, aye.
All in favor?
All right, thank you.
I was busy.